This one shows five hundred and... Five hundred and three gallons. Grandkids showing up on their tayco. It's time six o'clock. We can't think of the agenda, aren't we?
Yeah, come on.
I'm like, no, you don't go until seven, Lisa. Anyway, I made it, see?
Oh, that's right, it's military time, like eight thirty, oh, there's a one there, okay.
That can't be last year. Oh, that's for the quarter. Last year's. Just snappy tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna call the city council workshop for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. I do have a motion to start off this meeting before we jump into the agenda. And that motion is to amend the agenda to include a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute sixteen, section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A for the purpose of city administrator performance review. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we'll put that as C five C. All right. Now we can get on to the regular business. There's an update long-range financial plan for utilities.
Did you want to do a quick introduction? Mayor and council, we have Tammy Umdahl with Northland's, um, Northland Securities or Northland Financial back with us again. You've seen her before when she's come to present bond items. She's also the one who has worked with the city for the last seven years at least that I've been here, maybe longer than that, in updating our long-range plan for our utility funds. And so with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Tammy and then we'll be open for questions afterwards.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, good to be here this evening with you. Tammy Umdahl with Northland Public Finance. I have about twenty-five slides that I'm going to go through to summarize what was a much lengthier written report with a lot more detail, so I'm gonna touch on the highlight. And Mayor, I would be happy to take questions as I go through, I'll defer to you on how you would like to handle that. As I get started here, I wanna talk about some key takeaways. And the council may or may not have had a chance to look through the report at this point. I wanna highlight that that report is not your budget document. It is meant to be a long-term view and a snapshot in time. And the co- the city has undertaken this update to the financial plan for the utility funds a number of different times periodically. It has proven to come close to actual results, but it is not your budget. It is your budget where you make financial decisions. This is a snapshot in time for, based upon certain assumptions. And as I often say to staff when we work on these, as soon as the ink dries, in some cases, those assumptions are no longer current. But really, the test of the plan is how does it hold up in the long-term on a macro view? And as a guide for the ongoing management of those funds. As far as an overview, the impact of the growth of the city on the utilities main, continues to be the most significant variable for the long-term financial management plan. I would note, it was actually twenty thirteen was the first year that the city undertook long-term planning for the utilities. And that was as the city was beginning to undertake the offering of municipal utilities. And the plan has proven to be enduring for the city. The utility rate adjustments this year that are proposed, the rates themselves overall in that three percent level would have been needed, but the plan is prepared to promote conservation. And what that means is users at the higher tier levels, there's no changes to the city's existing tiers in the maximum volume per tier, but those higher volume users in this progressive system will be paying more for each thousand gallon of water that they use. We'll get into that more in a moment. And that is true both for residential and commercial customers. The plan pay, um, as I stated, proposes to maintain your current tier structure, no changes. Proposes inflationary adjustments after this year twenty twenty-four, adjustments to promote that conservation. The last point, the management of cash balance and assets. For those of you have, who have may have heard me give this presentation in the past when we've done the study, we're looking at those rates to achieve revenue sufficiency. Revenue sufficiency to ensure that the fund has significant, or excuse me, appropriate reserves on hand and meets ending cash objectives. The plan does propose bonding for water and storm water. There is no bonding proposed for sanitary sewer. And that is a balance between rate increases, what your planned project improvements are. And so bonding helps to smooth out what would otherwise need to be larger increases. For future customers, and there's more data in the report, but in summary, you can see a table here and rec standing for residential equivalent units. Some customers, um, will connect to either municipal water or sanitary sewer, but not, may not be both, which is why you see some difference there between. Um, we anticipate increase in water only customers due to the grant funding. And sanitary sewer improvements in the old village also counts for some of the differences between the water and sewer rec that you see in the plan. Now to get into a few charts here, this is simply showing graphically that growth in residential equivalent connections from plats and from connections. So at time of plat, there's fees that are due and at time of connection. So we track both of those in the plan and it matters to the projection of that revenue over the long term. Here, the chart prior related to the water fund, this chart relates to the sanitary sewer fund and the comment before that some connect to water, some connect to sewer and some not both. Here, in putting this up, I don't wanna read these numbers to you, but I know that you may follow what these fees are. To note, you'll see for twenty-four proposed, at the lower volume tier, the rate of that increase is smaller in the one to two percent. And as you get at that higher volume, it is in the ten percent range. High-volume customers will not see a ten percent increase in their bill because it's a progressive system. So as their lower volume is billed out at those lower tiers, as they get to the higher volume and pr- the city's promotion of conservation, they will pay more for those, that higher volume of usage.
Isn't it just a question? So you're considering higher tier beyond fifty thousand gallons, is, am I reading that right? Or above thirty thousand gallons? And do we know what the average household uses during a period?
Mayor, I'm gonna have some charts here in a moment on the average usage, but maybe to speak to part of your question there. So on the lower volume tier for the first fifteen thousand gallons, what's shown and proposed in the plan is only a one percent increase. For the next tier, it would be a two percent increase. For that third tier, it would be a five percent increase twen- from year twenty-three to twenty-four, as I'm quoting these. For tier four, it would be a ten percent increase. And for tier five, it would be a fifteen percent increase. But important to note, that does not mean those customers, and we'll show some charts here in a moment, are gonna have ten or fifteen percent increases because they also have low-volume quarters and they will benefit so that your lower, your volume usage, the less on a percentage increase that you will be paying.
Council member McKinnon.
Just to that, maybe you, maybe you'll be able to address this. As I was reading this, um, given the fact that we've had many people in the city that are now on city water, that have larger lots, that's going to take more water to minimally irrigate their lawns. Aren't they going to be penalized?
They will be paying more for that higher volume usage, that is correct, than they are currently under the pa- under year twenty twenty-three rates.
Okay, so do we have numbers that would indicate that if they, if, if we had a flat rate, if everybody paid the same amount, they're still going to have to use more water because they have a larger lawn, if you will. So they're going to be paying more than somebody that has a smaller lot. So the, so it, it feels to me like we're penalizing. Somebody that, it's not their fault they had to go on city water, or they went on city water because of the PFAS issues. And because they have, you know, maybe a regular size or a larger sized lot, for me, this feels punitive and I don't think it's going to raise conservation.
Mayor, council, so this is a policy decision for the city council. So it is not a revenue play, meaning the, the funds are in sound financial condition. As structured, this would have higher volume users paying more. The alternative would be if the city council said, well, we don't prefer that, we would like something different. Then an approximate three percent across the board increase to those tiers would get you the same revenue. So that is a policy decision for the city council. So it's not that you need to do this because you need more revenue, you need an inflationary increase. But as proposed, the lower volume users would be paying less and the higher volume would be paying more. And it is up the council to determine if that is appropriate for Lake Elmo.
Thank you.
Council member Holtz.
Thank you for that, Tammy. In, as you've done this for other cities as well, I presume, where they've, have other cities have, have they had similar conversations of using the fee structure to try to impact usage? And if so, have you seen success where certain increase types do indeed lead to decrease in usage?
Yes, I could give the example of the city of Lakeville went through a two-year process and their sole focus was on conservation and causing the higher volume users to pay more for every gallon of water than the lower volume. It was not a revenue challenge that they were dealing with. That was just adopted in the last year or two, so they are continuing to monitor that. I would note, some of the commercial customers, you know, were in that sixty thousand dollar increase. The city spent a year, year and a half communicating with the commercial property owners and has put that in place and has not had any subsequent calls from the commercial property owners. But that's fairly recent, to answer your question as an example. But I wanna be very clear in this plan, this is not a revenue problem. It's not that you have a challenge that you need to make big adjustments to address it. A three percent across the board would get you the same revenue sufficiency. It is a matter of policy if the city council wants to adopt where the higher volume users would be paying more relative to the lower.
And to follow, thank you for that, to follow up with that, based upon your experience and knowledge, do you have any thoughts on whether a three percent across the board would have an impact on usage?
A three percent in my experience and also on national, it would not. And council member, to your point, whether that ten percent increase would cause a different result as far as conservation? And you, you asked me for an example, uncertain if that would be the case, but they certainly would have an incentive because they would be paying more at those higher tiers.
Thank you.
Yes, council member McKinnon, sorry.
My concern in, in that is if they have larger lots and they're trying to irrigate those to a minimum of making sure, if, if we continue this drought issue, I don't see the conservation because to try and keep your lawns alive is significant too, to somebody. I mean, people use their yards, they use their lawns. But I, I guess, I don't see, if it's not a revenue issue, then it's, I'm not sure I see the conservation piece of it.
Continue, please.
This chart shows example quarter utility bills for water combined, sanitary sewer and storm sewer. And this is showing residential customers. In my presentation tonight, I'm focusing on residential, it's the majority of your customers. I would note, though, the plan did not ignore commercial, there's also information in the plan about that. So here you can see the low volume twenty-three, what they would be paying based on, and here, low volume six thousand gallons. The medium or average, the twenty thousand, and a higher volume at a hundred and seven thousand gallons billed. And here, let's focus on the high volume. So there is, on a percentage basis, a greater increase, but higher volume users during those non-summer months will also have lower utility bills as a result of this compared to if you did the three percent. So that's why the higher volume example from twenty-three to twenty-four would go from nine eighteen in this quarterly example to nine sixty-three. The medium volume as defined here would go from one ninety-five to one ninety-eight. And the low volume would, a dollar, one fourteen to one fifteen. And I wanna be clear, this is a policy decision on that conservation. You need to have some fee adjustment to keep up with inflationary pressure on the funds, but that's in the three percent range. So I will keep going with my presentation as the council considers this. Now I'm switching from talking about customers and the fees to talking about the funds. This chart is showing the projected year-ending cash and it's projected to be sufficient to meet those cash objectives. That includes cash available for the following year debt service payments, pay-go capital, because there is pay-go, not just bonding for these projects, and to maintain those reserves. And the different color represents the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer and the water fund. Some of that spend down of that cash balance is intentional because the city collects development-related charges to pay for infrastructure improvements to support that development. And as I noted, while there is bonding in the near term included, long-term, it is intended to use that cash that is available to pay for those improvements. Speaking of planned capital, um, project spending, um, here you see, the top of the bar represents, consistent with the city's capital improvement plan, total spending for the utility funds. But shown within that bar is how much would be funded from general obligation bonds. So you can see that in year twenty-four through twenty-six, special assessments and use of cash from the, the fund, the reserves available. This is showing estimated debt outstanding that is supported by the utility revenues. It does not include all of the city's debt, just supported by the utility revenue. So you see some increase from twenty-three to twenty-six and that directly relates to the plan includes bonding in year twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. But as you are issuing new bonds, you are also paying off your existing bonds at the same time. Over time, after year twenty twenty-five, or excuse me, twenty twenty-six, the plan does not include additional bonding. So there you see that chart going down in the amortization of those bonds. This is debt service, so principal and interest payable from utility revenue. With new bond issuance to support the phasing into the rate adjustments, you do see debt service increasing, but that is all being managed within the proposed fee adjustments. And I would note again, even though the fee adjustments focus on those higher tiers, that is a council decision and the three percent would get you to the same revenue sufficiency. But in the eyes of the council, whether you view that higher fee level promotes conservation or not is in the eyes of the council. Here's volume build, um, it's projected to increase, Lake Elmo is growing and here you see that. And that's reflected in the projected revenues within the fund as well. The taller bar being water and then the lower bar being sewer volume. Now a few comments on each of the fund, let's talk about the water fund first. The water fund is in sound financial condition, same as what you'll hear me say with sanitary sewer and storm. So I'm not here with a plan saying you have to make large adjustments or changes. The city's been very planful with your utility funds and these funds are in sound financial condition. Future performance certainly will be impacted by development. The plan, I believe, and staff and those projections is conservative in that development, but still, it is relying on development to generate new customers and new revenue to the utilities. The adjustment to those higher volumes is intended to promote conservation. Council will have to decide whether you wanna proceed with that. Future fee increases will depend on that pace of development. I referenced several times just that three percent being sufficient across the board. That's based upon the assumptions for development in the plan. If that does not turn out as projected, then those adjustments would be higher than what is shown. The annual debt service, just for the water fund, is to project it to average about two point four million over the planning period. And that's inclusive of the new debt that's included in the plan. The water fund fee adjustments, the plan does assume adjustments to fees as I walked through earlier, um, from twenty-three to twenty-four. After that, the annual adjustments are in that three, three and a half percent range. Again, that's based upon the key assumptions in the plan and the assumptions for development. There is no change proposed to the availability and connection fees as far as the amount. The water fund revenues and expenses fluctuate and in some years you see revenue in excess of expense and you might say, well, why is that? That relates to, in, at Lake Elmo, your water fund collects both the fees from your users of the system as well as the development-related connection access charges are deposited. So as that development occurs, as projected in the plan, you build up those funds so that they are available when you have those infrastructure improvements to be supported by that development. This next chart, while very colorful, what it's really intended to show you is that the water fund is projected to have cash sufficient to meet all of the identified needs and emphasizing why I'm saying that the water fund is in, and projected to remain in sound financial condition. It is projected to meet these targets. The sanitary sewer fund has noted is also in sound financial condition, but again, impacted by development and the assumptions in the plan. The annual debt service on the sewer fund is less, it's at one point, estimated at one point three million. There's no bonding included in the plan for sewer funds, so that's for existing debt. The sanitary sewer fund fee adjustments, we've been focusing on waters, I was talking about the conservation piece. The plan for sanitary sew- sewer assumes the three to four percent adjustment over the next decade planning period and that beginning in, um, twenty twenty-five. There's no increase to the quarterly base fee for sanitary sewer in twenty-four, that is assumed to be held constant. After twenty-four, it's assumed to increase by three percent annually. The city charges both a base charge to cover fixed costs as well as volumetric charges. The volumetric charge is estimated to increase by four percent. That's higher than water because the disposal charges paid to the metropolitan council have been growing at a more rapid pace in that, in recent years, in double digits, in, in the near term, in the seven, eight percent range. So that's why sewer is a bit higher than water and that is a large line item in the sanitary sewer budget. In Lake Elmo, like every other metro city.
Council member McKinnon.
Do you know why it's, it's raising that, that high?
I can't speak to the specifics of that, some of that is how they have been managing as far as in that spread over volume. So some of that infiltration, um, has decreased or that their volume has decreased. So the, um, charge has increased in total, if that makes sense. But I cannot speak to the specifics of that. But I do know that for the, for twenty-four, it is closer to the seven percent increase compared to the recent double-digit increases.
Thank you.
Council member Holtz.
Tammy, for, at least for the sewer aspect, um, as the projection goes through twenty thirty-three and by a little before that, we would start to be using the twenty fifty comp plan, how did the projections happen for some of those later years when, was the projections based upon the current MUSA? And just presuming that remains the same for those future years? Or is there a presumption that the MUSA likely would expand for the twenty fifty plan?
Great question, I'm gonna have Christina respond to that one.
Yeah, um, council member Holtz, mayor and council, I put that together in the absence of a community development director. And what I did is assumed that the city would develop according to its current comp plan that we have today. And in the phasing, um, so no more jumping ahead into earlier phases, so kind of spread it out that way.
And then, and I don't wanna go necessarily too far back, but with the water as well, the water users twenty twenty-three looking at thirty-seven hundred and by twenty thirty-three looking at sixty-two hundred, is that also based upon not only all the houses that we already have planted, but a presumption that future approvals would occur as well? In a, in a line, in alignment with our phasing plan as well?
Um, it, it assumes that, um, all of the land in the comp plan guided for twenty twenty to twenty thirty would be develop, would be platted within that time. So from a WAC standpoint, connections sometimes come later, you know, with the houses, so that's why you see differences. And then I just, um, started that estimate for those first two or three years from twenty thirty to twenty thirty-two.
Gotcha, so the plan, the plan does presume that we will continue to approve new plats?
It does.
All right, thank you.
This next chart, sanitary sewer fund revenues and expenses. And again, similar to what we saw in the water fund, you see that fluctu- fluctuating and in some years, revenue exceeding expense and that's directly related to the timing of the collection of the development-related charges for future projects. The sanitary sewer fund is projected, um, over the planning period to be on target for ending cash goals and that includes cash for next year debt service, the restricted availability charges, any pay-go capital and unrestricted cash. And that unrestricted cash available for future programming of capital improvement projects. The storm water fund, um, sound financial condition, there is no, um, rate increase proposed for the storm water fund. And that has to do with the combination of the projected operating expenses over the planning period, but mostly driven by the capital improvement projects. So given the current rate and the plans for capital and projection for operations, there is no proposed adjustment to that storm water. That could change depending on capital needs, if something were to change. We were just talking about development would impact that, but as presented, no change to the storm water fee. And that current fee is ninety-five dollars per, um, utility rate factor. No change to the connection, um, fees as well. The storm water, here I wanna comment on this, um, here you see the opposite of what I showed you in water and sewer, expense exceeding revenue. This is showing the use of that revenue that was collected in prior years and the spend down of that to a level, when I get to the next chart, that still will meet the city's objectives for that use of that cash. So it's not a spend down and that you're gonna be in a negative position. It's an intentional planned spend down because you collected that revenue to use for, mostly for those projects. And let's go to that page. So here you see, over the next decade, and by the time you get to year twenty thirty-two, and what's really happening there is the amortization of debt. and what's really happening there is the amortization of debt that has been issued to fund stormwater as that is paid off. And you have that rate that's been set at that fixed amount that you begin to have more flexibility of revenue that's not having to go towards the debt service over time, but available for other pay-go projects. In close, excuse my voice, in closing, and I've said this a few times. Those three funds are in sound financial condition, but it depends on those projections for development. That is a very important factor for the city's plan. That has been true when the utilities were first set up, and that is true today. And that development-related revenue is a factor. The planned rate increases are needed. They are generally inflationary adjustments, with the exception of water in targeting those higher volume. But that's a policy discussion for the city council, what you find to be appropriate. And that increase in those fees, even though they're in that three, four percent range, may need to be higher if that development does not occur at what is hopefully a conservative estimate in the plan. With that, Mayor, Council, I'm happy to dive into the plan more or answer any questions that you may have for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Questions? Councilmember Beckstrom.
So you've talked a lot about our development projections and how important it is to the plan. So given our water situation and the potential for premature development and not having water, if we were to slow development, how does that impact? I mean, do we increase rates? Is there any modeling that involves different projections that you can speak to?
I can speak to that. So it would be a combination. So staff and some of those projects, and I would look at Christina, are related to development. So you may have less need for some of that revenue that what's currently in the plan. So it would be a combination of factors. It may not be necessarily having to immediately go to higher rate increases. It depends on what those demands on those revenues would be. And maintaining that revenue sufficiency over the long term is what is going to matter.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Mayor, Council, we can take some direction tonight, or you guys can kind of noodle on this. With respect to the rates, Director Hadler will be putting those together to be part of the fee schedule that you'll see back before you for adoption at the December fifth meeting. So absent any different direction tonight, our plan has always been to bring forward the rates that are proposed in the long-range plan.
Councilmember Beckstrom.
I wonder if we should talk just briefly about Councilmember McGinn's concern with the graduated rate increase for higher volumes and whether or not we think that will lead to conservation. I'm kind of split on the idea of it. One side being we moved all of these, a number of residents onto city water, forcing them in some cases, as you might describe that. And it does feel a bit punitive to me as well for those residents that did hook up, have larger lots, and will be obviously using more water as opposed to quite a number of the residents that, at the last minute, we changed the grant agreement and allowed them to stay on their wells and are not tied to any limits on watering. And so I wonder, in the context of that decision that we made this fall, if we should give this a thorough review and consideration if that's really the message we want to send to, again, some of these residents that hooked up to city water, did the right thing, capped their wells, but have large lots and will be using more water.
I think those are good discussion points, I guess. When I, I was kind of curious as to, you know, the impact to the individual household. And I mean, this page is quite a ways down there. The graph that showed the increase per year for low volume, medium volume, and the high-tiered user.
Maybe just a couple of dollars.
It was, it was less impact than I really had.
Nine eighteen to a thousand and change. Yes, Councilmember McGinn.
I just think that, I guess for myself, we've already put very restrictive irrigation standards to add to the conservation of water within the city. Many of these neighborhoods that we brought on city water due to the contamination are relatively new to this. And for me, if I see a larger bill, that tells me, okay, I need to back off. I'm gonna do that. You know, so I just feel like we need to give our residents an opportunity to look at what they're paying or evaluate irrigation prior to us. And to me, it feels like a penalty because they have a larger property, which is, in the past, is what Lake Elmo was. You know, they had large lots. That's why people moved here. For those of us who moved here after two thousand fifteen during the development start, we came in here and we knew we had small lots. And so I just am feeling like it's more punitive. And if financially, it's not gonna make that big a difference, I'm not sure using it as a conservation method is appropriate.
Councilmember Holt.
Clarifying question for Marty, as I have never paid the water bill myself, and I never look at it, which is why it's paid on time by my wife. Eighty thousand gallons. What, how much is that? Is that what a quarter acre lot would use if they're irrigating, or is that really your acre and a half lots? Because I can't visualize that.
In a year, the average household, the average household is about twelve thousand gallons. So that's much smaller than.
Quarter.
Per quarter.
Twelve thousand gallons.
This might be a better question for Clarissa. I'm not sure that Marty sees the billing.
Yeah, all right.
I'm not sure that, and I don't mean to put her on the spot either, but that's not really his.
I'm not sure I have the exact number that we're looking for, but we had run that sort of loose water study recently. And so the numbers that I have in front of me are showing an average quarter-one usage at around twelve thousand, quarter-two usage around thirty-three thousand, and quarter, that was quarter-two, quarter-three usage around fifty-five thousand as the average, not the mean. So it's just gonna, it's gonna be weighted a little differently.
So it's entirely possible that there are quarter acre lots that are watering a heck of a lot and are getting close to eighty thousand. Because again, if that's the average, we have far more quarter acre lots than we do acre and a half lots that are on city water.
I would assume that to be true.
About double.
Yeah, so I, I'm just trying to visualize. I fully support using natural market forces as one of the tools in our toolkit. The council overall, all five of us have indicated that we support conservation processes to try to do what is best for the city long-term, for the environment. We know the aquifer, we know the many variables. I have no issue with having this conversation as to how to use natural market forces in that way. Now, if indeed, who knows what the happy spot is in order to have a potential change in usage? But I fully support having that conversation. I also don't know if tonight is the right place for it. I think tonight was just feedback, the plan overall, and we can massage the policy aspect at a later date. Is that correct?
It is, yeah. Like I said, the decision point will be at the December fifth meeting.
Right, so, I mean, those are all valid points. And, you know, I'm a residential user, probably on the lower end without an irrigation system, so. But I also see the side of people that have larger lots and want to keep their grass somewhat kept and in order. So certainly some conversation to be had December fifth. But having this out there gives, I think, our residents, if they're interested in their water billing, to take a look at it and provide some feedback from their stance for that meeting. All right. Item number three is the new Lake Elmo Elementary Sketch Plan. Mr. First.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Give me a moment to bring the presentation up. Okay, so we're looking at a concept plan for new Lake Elmo Elementary School. And that school would be located on the parcel, which is circled in red on the screen in front of you. Just as a reminder to you, this is the concept plan process or the pre-application for subdivisions process. This is completely advisory. There's no formal decisions made, just as a reminder or fresher to the council. Feedback, though, is very important as part of this process, and it's why developers are required to go through it. And specifically, this evening, getting the council's feedback on this proposal is what's desired. So as far as land uses go, public school is the land use as defined by city code. Specifically, the school district is requesting a connection to city water and sewer on this property. Just as a sort of general location, this is at the northeast corner of Lake Elmo Avenue and Tenth Street in the city. So there is a drawing which was provided by the school district and their consultant and a narrative, which, both of which were included in the staff report. There is some high-level information provided in those documents, and it's kind of summarized on the slide here. So we're looking at a property that's just under fifty acres. This building as proposed, I don't know that this would be the exact footprint that the school would end up proposing on the site, but this is just under a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Portions of the structure would be proposed to be two stories. There would be one thousand one hundred students as proposed. That is the capacity that the school is envisioning for the site. The site plan that's proposed to the city includes separate access points for buses, bus traffic, and the rest of the vehicular traffic serving the site, which would be parents and teachers. There is a potential, the school district has indicated, for the joint use of amenities on-site by the city and the school district. That would include ball fields. We can see a playground and, yeah, the ball fields would be the other amenity there. Lastly, the site plan does envision several locations for where stormwater ponding may be located, although obviously more review of that would be needed. So that's the high-level information. The school district was looking just to provide some simple information because they, at the time of the submill, didn't know the outcome of the election. So now we know that they were successful in their request for bonds to make investments in schools. We have looked at the land use information for this site, and there is an analysis provided in the staff report summarized on the slide. So the city's future land use map, which is in the comp plan, is shown on the screen here. The site's in red. The guidance currently for the future land use category on the site is RAD, which is rural area development. The zoning district on the site currently is agricultural. So in terms of the land use guidance that would be required for this property, the school district would need to request a comprehensive plan amendment for a change in the land use category from RAD to institutional. The corresponding zoning district would be public facilities for this use. So a rezoning request would be required. Back to the comprehensive plan, you'll note that the location of the MUSA boundary is shown on the future land use map, and you can see it. This site is just outside of it. And so we have talked to the Met Council sector representative, and they have said that the MUSA boundary can be extended to this property if the city was looking to approve that. It can actually be an island, so to say, so not anything contiguous to it. That would be something that the Met Council could allow. So other entitlements that would be required for this property include a major subdivision because there is right-of-way acquisition or dedication needed as well as easement dedication. And lastly, a conditional use permit would be required for a school. So in looking at the conditional use permit requirements, there's two main criteria that the school needs to meet in order to receive a conditional use permit for the site. One is basically a maximum on the gallons of stormwater generated by the use. The maximum for this site would be just over eleven thousand gallons. So that's based on the net acreage. We don't know what the net acreage is on the site currently because we don't know if there's any wetlands or anything of that nature yet. But the school district has provided some data based on comparable school facilities, indicating they believe they would come in lower than that maximum at six thousand six hundred gallons per day. So the last thing is that the, or the second condition, rather, is that this school would have to be located on a collector or arterial roadway, and that would be met, obviously, by the site. So this is a pretty unique aspect of this particular site plan review, and that's the proximity to a shooting range. That's called the Oakdale Gun Club, and Ariel is just showing you sort of the location of these two sites. There have been questions regarding, you know, the state laws surrounding locating uses around shooting ranges. And so specifically, what we're looking at is chapter eighty-seven A. That is a state law. This was passed in two thousand and five. It's called the Shooting Range Protection Act. And so the intent is really to preserve the ability of shooting ranges across the state of Minnesota to remain and not sort of be pushed out by surrounding developments. So that's the goal of the state statute. There are some practical things as it relates to this particular site, whether it be a school or other use. So the law basically creates a seven hundred and fifty-foot boundary or a mitigation area, as it's called. And so uses that are established in that area cannot cause a shooting range to become noncompliant with the state's performance standards for shooting ranges. So as it relates to this particular project on the site, the school, as the developer, will be responsible for demonstrating the project would not cause the shooting range to become noncompliant with the state standards. And so they would be able to continue operation of the shooting range. The information that we would need to determine the conformance with the performance standards, this would be provided by the school's team as they pursue the development. That would be acoustic measurements on the property boundary, very likely to demonstrate conformance with noise, and then other standards as we identify. Okay, just another note for you. The gun club is, or it was initially allowed through city resolution eighty-eight five. That's in nineteen eighty-eight. That is what authorized the conditional use permit that sort of regulates that use in the city. Other regulations would just be the underlying zoning standards.
Just a quick question on that.
Yep.
Sorry, so when we're talking about uses in the mitigation areas, so is it just strictly if the property of the school is within that seven hundred and fifty-foot zone? That's the mitigation area?
Yeah.
So it's cutting it in half?
Councilmember, that's a good question. So, and thanks for asking that question. So I did have a kind of a rough drawing, so to say, on the screen in front of you. That's approximating where that seven hundred and fifty-foot mitigation area is located on the site. As far as the actual use in that area, whether it was a ball field or a school, we would want to have sort of the measurements to determine whether the performance standards are met, regardless of what kind of use is in the area.
It could matter if it's owned by the school, but it's only the baseball fields are within that seven hundred and fifty versus the actual school building itself. That could be a different factor for if it's considered in the mitigation area or not. Making it noncompliant.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but that's a good question. And I think that that particular piece is what we would have to get more information to really, to really think through more deeply because we don't really know what the noise measurements are. Specifically, if we're looking at just like the noise standards in the statute, we don't know what those noise measurements are. So it's tough to kind of figure out how the school's development would impact the shooting range without some more data. And then we would also look at what uses are in that seven hundred and fifty-feet area and exactly to your point, what mitigation might be needed.
Okay, sorry, then last question. So if it is. Okay, sorry, then last question. So, and if it is. Within that seven hundred and fifty foot mitigation area and it's, makes the gun range become non-compliant. Does that just make the project a done deal? It can't happen then?
So there are some, there is some language in the state statute about mitigation that can be provided by the developer of the site. Again, it does, it, you know, it's not necessarily like it, oh, it's a school, that has to be special mitigation. It's any development. That would, would be in that area, we would be looking at the same thing. And so there are potentially some things that a develop. Development on this site could do, uh, to, you know, specifically, again, if we're just talking about noise. Uh, maybe it's a berm and a sound wall or something of that nature to, to install some mitigation that would. Basically allow for that shooting range to still stay in conformance.
Great, thank you.
There, there may be some things that can be done.
Councilmember McGinn?
Beyond the noise mitigation, uh, from a public safety standpoint. I have, I was out there, I've walked that property. And it was interesting this last weekend when I walked that property. You, um, with Lake Elmo Park Reserve there, you can walk literally to the fence line of the range. And I walked the complete range area this weekend. It was actually shut down. That trail was shut down for some reason. I don't know if it was, um, because of deer hunting season or whatever, but I walked that area. I've got some concerns that. Would the school district, if, if a child or when a child decides to go. And explore into the east end of the, that range, because I believe it could happen and I've seen it happen. In my career where you have had young children that, you know, their curiosity gets the best of them and they go to investigate things and. Some bad things can happen. However, um. I'm curious as to if something like that happened, would, from a legal standpoint. There's what they call an attractive nuisance. Does that property line, it would be interesting to see if the school would end up, if somebody went over there and got hurt. Whether the school or the range would be considered an act, uh, you know, a attractive nuisance. Which is specifically having things within reach of a child that could severely injure them or, or have, have deaths. So. I'm not only concerned about the, the noise. I'm a little concerned about the secluded area of the school in that area. And, you know, if, if something, unfortunately, if something would occur with a, uh, shooting. At or around the school. That's a pretty secluded area back there because you have the range and you have Lake, Lake Elmo Park Reserve back there. So. I, I guess I've just not seen a school in a secluded area like that. They're usually, from my perspective, have been in. An open area where they can be, um, where you can get to them from all sides. And see what's coming at you from all sides, so.
Thank, thanks, Councilmember. Um, I would just note to you that, you know, through the development review process, the, the city would have the ability to provide. Conditions that mitigate percept, you know, safety concerns and so. As we, as we get further, if we get further in the process, I think, um, staff are, are definitely looking at. You know, definitely planning to look at that particular point of safety and, and I think that would be something that the city could condition an approval of. Requiring certain improvements. And the school district is here this evening and I'm sure they have some, some thoughts as well about safety. Uh, on the site for, for their students. So. Appreciate the, the, the point or comment there. Um, I'm gonna kind of keep things rolling and, and make sure that you have time to. Discuss and hear from the school district. Um, but I am happy to take any, any questions throughout the rest of this presentation. So. Other considerations with respect to this concept plan, uh, that are discussed in the staff report and. And worth mentioning, there are zoning and bulk standards for the site that appear to be met by the concept. Uh, the building design, we don't know what that would look like at the moment, but we would review that against applicable city standards. Uh, landscaping and tree preservation, again, uh, not a ton of detail on that at this point, but we do anticipate a significant amount of tree preservation. To be required for this site. There's, you know, there's a lot of wooded area on the site. Uh, we would need a. Plan that demonstrates conformance with the city's requirements for that. Utility availability. So the city engineer in, in, in his comments did provide some. Information regarding the availability of city utilities for the site. Traffic and access, there are, uh, city and county comments about, uh, the, the access proposed for the site or required. And then lastly, stormwater as, as the, the site goes further along in the process. Uh, stormwater would be reviewed against Valley Branch requirements as well.
Councilmember Holtz?
Just a quick question. I know on site there's, there are already two fire hydrants. I'm just wondering if we know why. The site would have, there's one on each side. I'm just wondering, would that have happened when. Lake Elmo was getting sewer and it just, they put hydrants in at the time? You know, one has nothing to do with the other, like. Do we know?
When the water main came?
Would that, would have been when the water main?
There is water on Lake Elmo Avenue, going, extending along Lake Elmo Avenue. So is that where the hydrants are that you're referencing or?
Uh, they're on Lake Elmo and, uh, well, I guess my underlying question is. Would, why would they have been put there at the time? Is there like a standard that even if. The site is not developed, that still should be put there in case it gets developed?
Yeah, and, and you need hydrants for along roadway corridors as well, so.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, uh, moving on. So, um, we do have obviously review comments from planning, from the planning department, but as well, we have them from city engineering and fire. Uh, both, both memos were included in the staff report. At a very high level, I'll, I'll summarize the, the comments that we've received so far. Uh, traffic study would be required for the sites, a requirement of the city code, uh, for this particular use. There are requirements that we would anticipate for trails, turn lane improvements, utility easements and right of way dedication. Those are engineering related items. Uh, there are challenges with groundwater contamination in this area, which is why the. City engineer is suggesting a requirement to connect to city water. Uh, and then noted, uh, as well as the MUSA requirement to extend the MUSA boundary for sewer service if that's. Uh, on, happening on the site. Uh, in terms of, um, fire concerns, the thing that seemed most important, at least. At this stage to me was the requirement for the access points for the emergency services to the site, the two of them. Uh, and then lastly, the sprinkling of the building would be required per fire code. Uh, and then lastly, we've gotten comments from Washington County and Valley Branch Water District, Watershed District on the site. As well as we've had some preliminary discussions with the Met Council. So, uh, there's, before I get into the discussion questions, I wanted to mention a couple more things. The, the site would not trigger a need for environmental review, that's an EAW. Uh, because the size of the building is proposed to be less than the state threshold. In terms of a timeline for the development of the site. I would suggest that you talk to the school district about that this evening, but. Uh, because of the successful bond outcome, my understanding is they're looking to get rolling within the next year on plans for the site. Um, and then lastly, the comp plan amendment as mentioned in the staff report would require a four-fifths vote by the city council. So a successful meeting this, uh, this evening will result in, in clear feedback to the applicant. I've suggested some discussion questions in the staff report to you, but they're also rewritten on the screen here as just a reference for you. The, the applicant is looking for the council's feedback on the applications they're gonna make. Uh, the, the future land use map amendment, the rezoning, the subdivision and the conditional use permit. Those are the required applications for the site. Uh, so feedback is, is desired from the city council. With that, I'll stand for questions or you can talk to the school district.
Alright, the school district wants to speak, that's fine.
Mark Drumarosan, Director of Operations, is still with our school district. Again, we'll stand here for comments and questions, but I just want to reiterate and just say thank you for. Um, allowing us to be here and we're very excited to continue the hundred year tradition of having a school here in Lake Elmo. Our current site was built in nineteen twenty, um, and right now we're just kind of wanting to pick that up, move it about three miles south and put it in another location.